Good evening. The time is 6:00 PM. I will be calling the September 11th, 2024 Churchill County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Hyde, you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three, Public Comment. Is there any public comment? None heard. Agenda item number four, Verification of the Posting of the Agenda.
The agenda was posted as stated on the agenda and in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Code.
Agenda item number five, Approval of the Agenda as Submitted or Revised. May I have a motion?
Paul Pecoti, for the record, make a motion to move the agenda as submitted or revised.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Pecoti, seconded by Commissioner Goins. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Agenda item number six, Verification of the Notification of All Landowners in accordance with NRS and the Churchill County Consolidated Development Code.
All efforts to reach in property owners were made in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Code.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, Postponement of the Approval of Minutes of the Meeting Held on August the 14th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde, for the record, I move that for good cause, we postpone the Approval of Minutes.
Motion been made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Goins. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Agenda item eight, Old Business, A. Review of a Special Use Permit Previously Granted to Paul and Tiffany Pecoti for A. Alcoholic Beverage Processing, B. Eating/Drinking Establishment with Alcohol Sales, Nighttime Hours, and C. Multi-Tenant Retail Facility at 2030 Reno Highway. Assessor's Parcel Number 008-361-56.
And Paul Pecoti, for the record, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from this portion of the meeting and step down.
Thank you. State your name and business address for the record.
Paul Pecoti, 2030 Reno Highway, Fallon, Nevada.
Thank you. Planner Patterson, do you have an update on this project?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. So we've had quite a bit of discussion in the office with Mr. Pecoti and about other related things. The main item is the status of the NDOT right-of-way improvements in front of the business. I haven't heard the latest. Director may wish to add some information. He may have learned about the NDOT issues.
Yes, Randy Hines, Church County Public Works Planning and Building, in contact with NDOT. They have the project in the works. It's in 60% design. They're looking at having potential, begin construction date spring of 2026. So that's kind of where they sit as today. And with that, there's an approach coming into the site along with, in the 30% plans that I saw, along with landscape islanders across the front, which is what Mr. Pecoti wants to use for his landscape, so.
Thank you. Mr. Pecoti, do you have any other comments?
Yep, Paul Pecoti, for the record. I left a proposed addition to what Mr. Hines was just discussing about the NDOT right-of-way. And that's for the, just to put some trees in and planter boxes. This is my proposal to the board. So, Mr. Hyde, I did heed your comments at the last meeting, and I propose two trees along the property line there, as you can see on the east. I don't see any reason why I can't just put two trees in there. So, a couple of trees there. There's one in the front corner already. And then, two planter boxes in the front of the building is what I was proposing to the board to, for approval, so that we can move forward and end the SUP. Also, one of the other outlying issues that we had from the first, the original SUP is the fence along the back. I'm not sure if you guys had made it by, but there's a fence in there now. So that's taken care of. And that was everything left on the SUP originally.
Yes, so we did get to go by and saw that there's the chain link fence. I just need to point out that it's supposed to be screened, so that the parking lot lights can't go back to the residences in the rear.
Say it again?
The fence needs to be screened. That was the condition of approval of a, is a screened fence. Privacy fence.
Is it a chain link fence?
It's chain link.
Okay. And you're aware of the screen?
No, I didn't really, I guess I should have read that little.
But it'll be taken care of?
Sir, we'll go ahead.
Just need to add some slats or something along those lines.
Yeah, we could put slats in it or mesh or something. I'll have to look into it.
Alright.
But I'll put some in it.
Okay. So we're here to review this application and make sure that he has checked off in good faith everything that's needed to be done, part of the application. And we're here to sign off this business, so with another year review or no review, since the sidewalk and the highway's not been done, we may only want to, just like we review it in one year, he can come back and like, yep, NDOT's still working on it, and NDOT's done this and NDOT's done that. But as far as having any other reviews, probably approved, he's ready to be approved, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, just comment, it doesn't have to be a single year. You could extend it for a different period of time at your discretion. So if the plan's spring 26, you could set it after that period of time, if that's the desire of the board.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins, do you have any comments or discussion?
Excuse me, Jeff Goings, for the record. I think pretty much everything's been spelled out just right here. One of the things I really wanted so that the public understood was, is that, one of the conditions was that the Pecotys were going to have to do something on that frontage on 90, on 50 there. And it was either going to be in bond, or if NDOT approved something, and it was about six months ago that I think he finally got approval from NDOT. So, just to point out that some of those requirements that were going to be required are going to be delayed due to NDOT's time. And so I just want that to be clarified, so that we're not overstepping here.
That's correct. Director Hines?
Yeah, Randy Hines, for the record. I just want to make sure that when we do get that landscape in, we just know where the right-of-way line is, because some of that could entail an NDOT permit prior to putting in landscape. So you just got to ensure that wherever that's at, it's either outside, or if it's inside, that requires another permit, an encroachment permit, so.
Yeah, I'll have to look into how far the encroachment is. Because the only thing that I propose that's near the highway right now is the two trees. And I can show you this. I handed it to the.
Yeah.
So with the location of those, and I believe the board has a copy, I'll look into it to make sure that it doesn't need a permit. But I believe that being on the property on the side there, it won't need an NDOT right-of-way approval for that. What Mr. Hines is, I believe, speaking of, is, once the sidewalks come through, they're going to have a little bit of a area that I could put some more vegetation in.
Okay.
And that would need NDOT approval, because it's in there right-of-way.
So today's understanding is, you're going to get the fence screened soon, and you're going to get the planter boxes going, you're going to get those two trees going, and that's where you're stopping until the NDOT portion of the project regains. Okay? Do you have a timeline that you can give us for the slats and the fence, the planters and the trees?
Yeah, we can do 90 days if the board is good with that.
Do you have any discussion on the 90 days, Commissioner Hyde or Goins?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde, for the record, I think Paul and Tiffany are doing everything they can to meet requirements. I'm happy to see trees being planted. And the planter box, and then after NDOT is completed, you will have an area where you can put some more, you know, some kind of landscape. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we gather for a motion, I recommend that maybe we have this come back on the docket June of 2026. That would give a little bit of lead time there. You can go from there. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, for the record, I would move that we approve all of the items, alcohol beverage process, eating/drinking, all of this, with a review in June of 2026 to confirm that all requirements have been satisfied.
Motion been made by Commissioner Goins, seconded by Commissioner Hyde. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you. Agenda item eight, B. Review of a Special Use Permit Previously Granted to Castillon for an Explosion/Combustion Testing Facility Northeast of Hazen. Assessor's Parcel Number 09-291-09. Is the applicant here? The red flash, the red flashing thing there, just touch the light. State your name and business address for the record.
Bailey Ambries, 737 Leireport Street, Also Gundo, California, 90245.
Thank you. Planner Patterson, do you have comments?
Yeah, Dean Patterson, for the record. So there's been a lot of changes since the Planning Commission heard this last time. There's been quite a bit of difficulty in getting legal access out to the site. And in my last conversation with Sean Pitt, 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 he indicated that they were not going to pursue this site any longer. So I've been talking on the phone with Bailey, yeah, Bailey, and we're going to get together tomorrow to try to find some alternative sites that will work for them. So I think they still intend to set up shop here in Churchill County. So at least that's some good news.
Okay, are we looking to postpone this? Or there's nothing really to discuss, is there?
I think we're just going to, Joe, help me with the word.
I believe in this case, we would terminate this special use permit, because whenever a new permit is going to be granted, it'll have to be specific to the new property. So unless the applicant intends to develop this property, we would terminate this special use permit, and we will review the new one whenever a suitable site is found.
Do you have any comments or concerns or questions?
Mostly just a comment. As Dean mentioned, we are not going forward to seeking the renewal of the permit. But we would just like to say we've enjoyed, like, working with this county so much, and we are, like, genuinely very excited to continue working with you guys. So we just wanted to thank you.
Thank you for that. Can I have a motion to terminate this temporary use permit?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde, for the record, I move that we, that we, what was the word we're using? We're ending this?
Terminating.
Yeah, we terminate. Do we terminate this special use permit previously that was granted to Castillon for an Explosion/Combustion Testing Facility Northeast of Hazen, Assessor's Parcel Number 09-291-09.
Motion been made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Goins. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Agenda item eight, C. Temporary Use Permit Renewal Application for Temporary Quarters During Home Construction filed by Kenny and Lori Rhodes. Property is located at 2007 Soda Lake Road. Assessor's Parcel Number 008-121-81 in the E1 Zoning District. This permit originated 9/13/2023. And the applicant states they have installed electricity and a well. Good evening. Push the red light there that's flashing, and state your name and address for the record, and both names, if you both wish to speak.
Lori Rhodes.
Kenny Rhodes.
2007 Soda Lake Road.
Thank you. Planner Patterson?
So yeah, as you mentioned, the applicant obtained the permit last year. I believe they've made some progress. They've provided some materials for your viewing pleasure. So I guess I'd like to just offer them a chance to update the Planning Commission on their progress over the last year.
Thank you. Would you like to give us an update on your construction project?
Yes, it's going well so far. So we have, we have power out there. We provided the power bill to show all of that, as well as drilled a well. And we have done quite a bit of roadwork out there. Anything you want to add?
So in the past year, you've got electricity to the property, and you've got the road situated, ready to build. And now what is your plan moving forward for this year?
Moving forward, we are speaking with our contractor, Jerry Reiki, with Shell Creek Construction, picking out a plan, deciding where the house is going to sit exactly, and moving forward in that direction.
What do you plan to have accomplished from this day next year at this time?
The plans picked out, the exact location of the house mapped out. Do you want to add anything to that?
And hopefully a building loan by then, yeah.
Hopefully what?
A building loan, yeah, to get, you know, to build a house.
Alright. Does Commissioners have any discussion, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde, for the record, what do you currently do for septic?
We have marshals there every two weeks.
Okay, so you have a contract where they come out every two weeks?
Yes.
Take care of that?
Yeah, I purchased six loads of rock so far to go towards putting the septic system in.
Good. That's what we're looking at, is what progress we're making, and.
Yeah, you can see them kind of stacked there on the backside where the RVs sit, in light colored rock.
But if I heard you right, you feel like you'll have a set of plans and start building during this next year?
We're hoping by this time next year, we should be starting the groundwork for the house, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, for the record, do you think you guys will have the septic system in between now and, say, June?
Probably between now and January.
Okay. So that's the kind of progress the board's looking for. Give us, you know, some ideas of where you're looking at there.
Yeah, I've already been to Hiskets, priced out that, got them lined up to where they'll deliver it, put it in the ground.
Yeah.
And it'll be done under peak construction.
Yeah. So just to kind of briefly bring you guys up to speed, a lot of these temporary use permits that here moving forward are going to have time-sensitive completion dates, not necessarily right now, but here in the near future. And so the board is just looking to see that we're moving forward. We have a lot of them that are sitting there where nobody's moving forward. So that's what we're looking for, and that's the kind of information we need for you guys to provide. Thank you.
We want to move forward, trust me. Trust me.
I want to cut the marshals bill out as soon as I can.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? If no discussion, ask for a motion for approval or denial.
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, for the record, I move that we renew the temporary use permit for Kenny and Lori Rhodes, Parcel Number 008-121-81, with a review again in one year.
Motion been made by Commissioner Goins, seconded by Commissioner Pecoti. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. We'll see you back in one year. Please stay in contact with the Planning Department and.
Thank you.
And Building, Planning and Building. As you know, they relocated to Main Street, so make sure you have that right added.
Yeah, thank you.
Agenda item eight, D. Review of Special Use Permit Previously Granted to Antonio Moran for Fabrication Business at 8920 R. Lane, Assessor's Parcel Number 007-151-85. A condition of the permit is an annual review until the Planning Commission determines that it is no longer necessary to ensure that the conditions of the permit have been met. Good evening. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. Nancy Moran and Antonio Moran, 8920 R. Lane.
Thank you. Planner Patterson?
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Moran received his permit last year, and he's been moving forward. I stopped by the property last week and talked to him. He's still got a couple items to finish. His landscaping was installed along the street, but it died. He can describe more about that if he likes. And then, he was misunderstanding about the screening for his raw material storage area, which is next to his fabrication shop. So I got him kind of clear about what's needed, and so he's planning to do some, probably some chain link fence with slats around the raw material storage area. So that is between the shop building. See if I can spot it here. It's going to be picky there. So there's the shop building, and there's raw material storage areas along this area here.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add or further comments?
So we have been in contact with our, the person that we're going to be buying trees from. She does say that we would have to wait until the trees go dormant to go ahead and put them back in. So there are no trees there. He just pulled those out because they looked horrible. And then he has ordered now the slats for the chain link fence, for the raw material storage.
Okay, thank you. Planning Department, have you received any complaints on this over the past year?
Not personally, but the, you know, they wouldn't come to me. They would come to the code enforcement officer.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde, for the record, along the Highway 50, is there any requirement there for screening?
Not for screening, no. It would be around that storage area north of that shop, which would be kind of a long, narrow area where he stacks pipe and fittings and other materials.
Jeff Goings, for the record, so I would say that is very similar to hoofbeats in that you have your completed materials or your completed product out front, and that would be more or less of a showcase area, so that if you did screen, that kind of would eliminate your drive-by, I guess, so. That's my thought process there, anyway.
Is there any other discussion? None heard. Ask for a motion of approval, denial.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mark Hyde, for the record, yeah, I move that we approve the extension of the Special Use Permit granted to Antonio Moran for the fabrication business at 8920 R. Lane, Assessor's Parcel Number 007-151-85. This is an extension for one year.
Motion been made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Pecoti. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Agenda eight, E. Temporary Use Permit Renewal Application for Temporary Quarters During Home Construction filed by Robert Hunter. The property is located at 4432 Benson Lane, Assessor's Parcel Number 006-631-27 in the A5 Zoning District. This permit originated 9/11/2019, and the applicant states that the house is almost completed. Good evening. Please push the red. There you go. State your name and address for the record.
Robert Hunter, 4432 Benson Lane, Fallon, Nevada.
Thank you. Planner Patterson?
As you mentioned, this temporary use permit for home construction's been lingering for quite a while since 2019. I think Mr. Hunter's been making a lot of progress in the last year or two, and it's probably coming along. It might be the last time he asks for an extension, but I'll let him talk to you about that.
Thank you. Can you please update us on your progress and when you have an estimation of completion?
I only have my final inspection left, so I'm just buttoning up projects that need to be complete, that I get hurdles thrown in front of me on occasion. But I do believe I should be finalized by the end of next month, October. I should get my final by then, providing it all goes well.
Okay, thank you. Does the Commission have any questions or discussion?
Paul Pecoti, for the record, it looks like you've made, you know, substantial progress, and it looks like what we're looking at here is a dry-it-in dwelling. Is that correct?
Correct.
And insulated, and electric is run, and plumbing is all run, and all that? Okay. I make a motion to extend the temporary use permit for renewal application for temporary quarters during this home construction filed by Robert Hunter. The property is located at 4432 Benson Lane, Assessor's Parcel Number 006-631-27 in the A5 Zoning District.
Motion been made by Commissioner Pecoti, seconded by Commissioner Goins. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. So good luck, and we'll see you when you get done. Agenda item nine, New Business, A. Special Use Permit Application for a Dog boarding kennel filed by Brandon Brim. The property is located at 14066 Carson Highway, Assessor's Parcel Number 007-071-47, consisting of 13.3 acres in the A10 Zoning District. Please state your name and address for the record, if you wish to speak.
Brandon Brim.
Morgan Mace.
At 14066 Carson Highway, Fallon, Nevada.
Thank you. Planner Patterson?
Thank you, Dean Patterson, for the record. The applicant proposes a dog boarding kennel tentatively named Brimstone K9 Retreat. His partner has extensive dog kennel work experience. Both parties live on the property. The south portion of the site, one more, Diane, thank you. The south portion of the site has been cleared for the home and surrounding area. The kennel location is in the northeast corner, yes, there, of the cleared area just outside of the power line easement, which is marked by a fence. The power line road will be the access road. A 10 space parking lot is near the power line easement fence and the east side of the new building. And so if you can switch to the next image, Diane? Yeah, see if I can get it. Oh, there it is. So there you can see the building and the layout of the site. A new metal building will be around 850. A new metal building will be around 850 square feet with 10 kennels and office and septic system and will be insulated for sound and climate control. There will be outdoor dog runs connected to the inside. The applicant, the application describes the more detailed operations. The SUP criteria were reviewed in the staff report and there were issues identified. They're addressed in the recommended conditions of approval. Regarding sewer and water facilities, the site is currently developed with a residential well and septic system for the home. The application proposes to use these for the business, but that might not be acceptable with the state. Conditions are proposed regarding state water and commercial septic systems, and that may involve water rights as well for the, for the business. The Building Department provided comments regarding the need for a licensed contractor, engineered plans, ADA compliance for parking, access and restrooms, and the commercial septic system. Signage is proposed with the application with a sketch proposing a four by, I'm sorry, an eight by four foot sign along the, with possible content. Oh, thank you. Just note that the sign must be approved by the planning commission because it's in the A10 zone. The fire marshal has provided comments that the kennel building must be approved by the state fire marshal's office and may require some amount of fire sprinkling or fire alarm. That's up to the fire, state fire marshal. The property takes access off of the Carson Highway at the paved access road that serves the power line. Minimal traffic is expected, but NDOT has provided standard comments asking the applicant to coordinate regarding any right-of-way alterations, stormwater drainage, and highway signage permits. A dog kennel raises concerns with neighborhood compatibility, particularly regarding dog barking and the handling of animal waste. To the north are a handful of large... Yeah, thank you Diane. To the north are a handful of large undeveloped residential lots, and to the south and west are 17 home, homes on large lots. The nearest home is approximately 500 feet from the kennel building with the remaining homes further away. Odors from animal waste is addressed in the application by frequent waste removal, cleaning of the kennels, and the collection of solid waste by a waste collector. Noise from barking dogs is addressed in the application by keeping dogs indoors at night and supervision of dogs during the day. Dogs who bark excessively will be kept indoors. The kennel will be insulated, which will reduce noise inside the building. We did receive a letter in opposition to the proposal. They had specific concerns, this is from the Hofflers on Carson Highway. Noise from barking dogs, there are no trees in the area to mitigate sound. Water well concerns from increased usage for cleaning the kennel and home values, believing the project will have a negative effect on home values for the area. They are under the impression that anyone selling homes in the area will need to disclose that there's a dog kennel and believe that will have a negative impact on home values. So, staff is recommending approval. There are conditions of approval to, recommended conditions of approval to address issues raised in the staff report.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to add anything to his comments or new information since you have submitted?
I did make a few phone calls since we've spoken, Mr. Patterson. So, for the septic tank, I am already talked to Chad Marshall with Marshall's Septic, and we're gonna work on getting a commercial approved septic system. If there's any issues with permits or with getting a septic installed, then we will try for a holding tank. As for water sources for the well, I did speak with the Water Commissioner Sean Christensen, and he walked me through the process. We're gonna be getting a water rights surveyor, actually, I've already been speaking with David Crook here in Fallon, about going through the process again that permit started. Heaven forbid if anything happens and we can't get approved for it, then we do plan to have a water tank on the property. So, we'll be purchasing water rather than pumping water from the ground.
Okay.
And then, I did speak to NDOT, and they've already told me what I need to do. They just said I needed a trip generation letter, which I'll have to get a engineer to come out and propose that, and they said that should be it for them as far as NDOT approval.
Okay.
And we will be installing landscaping trees, those little, those little circles up there on there, I know I'm not the best artist. But, yeah, we do already plan on putting trees to reduce not just the noise, but to kind of beautify it a bit from the highway so no one's seeing the kennels straight from the highway, at least. They're seeing some nice tree line.
Okay. Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings for the record, so would the dogs be contained inside of the enclosure at night?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they wouldn't be allowed outside where you could get barking, even though you're 500 feet away from the next neighbor, you still follow what I'm saying? So, the, yeah, and I don't know if that's in one of the recommendations here, it probably is, yeah. So, it's 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM, the dogs will be inside the, okay.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I should have read on a little further.
During the day hours, they will have access to, as you can see the lines there, we have indoor and outdoor access for each dog, so they have that extra exercise. But, if they are excessive barkers even during the daytime, they will have to go inside for noise complaints. We don't want them, you know, aggravating other dogs and aggravating neighbors.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde for the record, do you have underground water rights for the well?
We do not, we just have residential rights to use it. So, when I spoke with them, they said we should be able to tie into that well. The projected use isn't gonna be excessive, but we do have to get the water surveyor to put in that proposal to their office and request it to be modified because it'll be for commercial use, instead of just residential.
Yeah, so how many gallons per minute do you normally, you project that you'll be using?
Right now, we're only projecting at probably an additional... I sat down, I gotta do the math in my head real quick.
It's, it's not important right now, I just, it was just the kind of question I have because, just wondering if you're gonna run into a problem with that, but. Basically, you're using water just to water the dogs and then wash down the kennels, right?
Yes, the water is mostly gonna be, as you can see, there's a employee-only restroom, so minimal use from just a single restroom, and then a washer dryer for cleaning any bedding that needs to be washed if there's accidents. And, yeah, just washing down the kennels each night, making sure they're mopped so they stay sanitary, and filling up water bowls, should be minimal use.
Yeah, so this is an application to the state water engineer based on the depth of your well and what it produces, and if you can, if you can actually tap into that well for this purpose?
Yes, sir. And if we can't for any reason, if it gets denied, then we do plan to have a, a water tank that we'll just purchase the water for.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul Pocodi for the record, and it looks like you absolutely have a great plan going forward, and you've done your homework, and you've talked to the right people, and are getting, you know, you know, the proceeding as you should. And I'm gonna bring up my only concern and is gonna be the concern of the neighbors, and it's the, how loud the dogs are gonna be. 500 feet is pretty close, you know, and I know because I, I'm around a kennel a little bit, and I can, they're over 500 feet, you know, audibly from where they're at. My only thing would be to alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns is potentially if the dogs were still loud, even during the day, that's kind of disrupting, that you guys would potentially be willing to put some, some type of sound deadening, you know, maybe even just a two-sided fence up. It would project that sound the other way, and not even a fence, I don't even know what it would be, just something sound deadening, and that might alleviate, you know, the neighbors' concerns for, for that noise.
Do I take that each time? We could definitely put in additional fencing on the south, what, sorry, trying to think in my head, I was spacing. That'd be the north and west sides, or is that south and west? Sorry, south and west sides where the neighbors are. To the north is undeveloped properties, and it's just BLM to our east. So, we can kind of, like you say, have that noise if it needs to reflect.
Right, and as long as you're willing to do that, I'm not saying I'm recommending it. I'm saying that in the future, it may be necessary just to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors, because it may not be an issue, and then you would have spent the money and not needed to do that. So, I would just be cognizant of that, be neighborly.
Yeah. I apologize, my nearest neighbor though is, who's next to us, does have 12 dogs themselves. So, we do understand, we hear their dogs quite frequently.
And, one last question, comment here. So, I'm trying to address, I don't know if you've seen this letter that was addressed to us with the concerns from one of the local people, but it was read within the, into the record here. Yeah. So, on item three, I, I questioned whether this is something that, and maybe we have somebody here that can answer this question for me. Is this something that does have to be disclosed at time of sale? So, I'm, I'm talking about your neighbors here, right? So, they're saying that the home values will decrease by five to 10% because of kennel in the area. I'm trying to figure out if those numbers were something that they picked up from a professional, or were they something that they just kind of picked up? And, and this question's not to you, I'm, I'm actually questioning anybody on this board that might have an answer to this. And does this, is this something that has to be disclosed when you're selling that property? That would be my question. We might have somebody in the audience that could help us with that maybe, huh?
I don't think it's their preview to determine if it's gonna affect the home values or not. The building could be used for many things. You may get in the kennel business and get out, so I don't know if we, you know.
I'm just...
It is a comment, and we, and we can have some value to that comment, but we are not real estate experts, and the county doesn't employ one, so.
Yeah, I would say that's just a zoning thing. If it's zoned to house this, then they're good.
That's how you'd look at it also.
Yeah, I'm good with that, yeah. I just wanted to make sure it was addressed because it's, this letter was...
Yes, it was, and we, we, I think we've addressed it accurately. Anything else you'd like to add?
I think I'm set.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Is there any public comment concerning this matter? None heard? Call for a motion of approval or denial.
Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde for the record. Based on the information provided in the application and the staff report, and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.080 have been met, and therefore approved the special use permit for Brandon Brim at 14066 Carson Highway, APN number 007-071-471. This approval is subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report. And there are seven conditions and seven subconditions, and so, have you been able to see those?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
And I've been addressing each one, just going through the list.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Goins. Those in favor? Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There's a 10-day appeal period, at which time the Planning Department will contact you to complete the process.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Agenda nine B, an application for a variance to waive the landscaping requirement in Churchill County Code 16.16.02046 for the parking lot tree filed by Josh Bush of Northern Nevada Research Company. The property is located at 7162 California Street in Hazen, assessor's parcel number 00925184, consisting of 100 acres in the industrial zoning district. Please state your name and address.
Joshua Bush, 7162 California Street.
Thank you. Planner Patterson?
Thank you Dean Patterson for the record. So, NNRC is a battery testing facility for the Tesla Corporation, and it has obtained two special use permits from the county. The parking code requires one tree per 15 parking spaces for all businesses, and this subject is, this matter's been a subject of discussion in previous SUPs. The applicant seeks approval to waive the parking lot tree requirement required at the office in the parking lot. As you can see, it's very heavy desert, very remote location. The staff report reviewed the variance decision criteria and found no major issues. There's also no recommended conditions of approval without me having to answer questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything to add or new information?
No, sir, that was, pretty much covers it. We've handled most of the issues discussed last time we were here, this being one of the few outstanding items left. Leave that up to you guys, we'd appreciate if we didn't have to struggle to keep a tree alive in the desert.
Thank you. I think we discussed that last time, it's impossible to grow a tree on that property, and so, anyway, is there any discussion, questions?
Paul Pocodi for the record, and this is more for the public, this, this property is, looks to be approximately, what, a mile and a half, two miles off the highway into the desert?
It's about three and a half.
Three and a half miles standalone all by itself, so. Yeah, not a gateway. So, Mr. Hyde will be okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Motion, approval or denial?
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings for the record. Based on the information provided in the application and the staff report heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria for, found in CCC 16.08.090 have been met and therefore approved the variance application for NNRC to waive the parking lot tree requirement on parcel number 00925184.
Motion been made by Commissioner Goins, seconded by Commissioner Pocodi. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There's a 10-day period on variances, and the Planning Department will contact you when it's ready to be done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck out there. Agenda nine C, temporary use permit application for temporary quarters during home construction filed by Mindy Block, Chris Ebenson, and Sharon Wolcott. The property is located at 15181 Hoover Drive, assessor's parcel number 00612267, consisting of 20.7 acres in the RR20 zoning district. The applicant proposes to reside in two RVs while constructing a primary residence. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Ebson, 15181 Hoover Drive.
Mindy Block, Hoover, same address.
Thank you. Planner Patterson?
Thank you Dean Patterson for the record. So, the applicant is requesting a temporary use permit for temporary quarters during home construction to allow them to live in two RVs while they build a home. There are three owners of the property, which were already listed, there being a married couple and a mother of the wife. The planned home will be of standard construction. There are only two, there are only a couple issues raised in the staff report. The application proposed using composting toilets, which are not acceptable for long-term use. Pumping the RV tank repeatedly while living in the RV is only allowed with a waste management and service plan approved by the Building Department. Staff recommends that the septic system be installed first so the RV can connect to it, and the future home will also be connected to it. Road service was another issue for this application. The property is served by Hoover Drive. The code requires that development have legal and physical access. There are road easements that meet the code's legal access requirement. The fire marshal inspected the road and determined the Hoover Drive does not meet the physical access requirements of a 20-foot wide road with an all-weather surface for fire truck access. It is 12 to 15 feet wide and sand, so it must be widened to 20 feet wide, and surface improvements may be needed. In addition, a small gulch creates a steep dip that may need alteration. Improvements must be approved by the fire marshal. These items are recommended conditions of approval. There was a letter submitted by a neighbor generally in support of the request. Yes. And there was the Building Department comments regarding use of the RV and... Yes, and there was the building department comments regarding use of the RV and the septic system. I can let you have those. Staff recommends approval with conditions listed in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything they wish to add or new information about this application?
Um, well, my plan is I did talk to, I did not get his last name, Mitch.
Yeah.
With the fire department. He was advising that it is 10 feet from the middle of the road that we need to clear the debris off of the road. And I also had a call in with the road department to see, because there is a ravine.
Ravine, it runs right across Hoover Road, it's got a pretty good incline.
And I have a call in with the road department to see if we can not fill in the ravine, I don't want to, to do anything with the natural flow of the water. It's detrimental to everybody in that area, but to kind of ease that incline up for everybody's benefit, the fire department and our personal use. We have, we, we have plans on getting that septic as soon as possible. I do not want to be up there without some kind of way of disposal. The fire department did not say anything about having to put road base down because he said it was rocky enough up there that it should be okay, but I, I, we can, it's.
You'll just work it out with the fire marshal?
Yeah.
If he's okay with it, then he's okay with it.
Yeah, but everything else, we just, we're planning on getting that septic up. I would like to have a trailer up there for security purposes or reasons, but.
Uh, Mr. Patterson, could you clarify, is Hoover Road a county road, even a minor county road?
Privately maintained.
Thank you.
It's a public road, public access, but it's privately maintained.
Does the planning department have any direction for the applicant as far as who to talk to about what she wants to do with the road?
Uh, the last time I talked to Mindy on the phone, it sounded like they were planning to obtain, maybe through renting, some earthmoving equipment to help do the heavy work. That may need something a little heavier than you think to kind of cut the sides back and lay them down for the, the gulch or ravine, but it may be perfectly fine to do it on your own. The, the earth there is mostly sand and so it's not hard to dig around in it.
My only concern is getting the neighbors okay because we're going from La Haunted Dam Road to the end, to the west end of our property. So we have to clear from La Haunted Dam Road to the west end of our property for the easement for the fire department. My only concern is going about and getting the other neighbors the information that we are going to be, you know, getting their property guidelines, so I'm not encroaching onto their property. That's my only concern.
You have the ability to go on the assessor's information on the website and find out their mailing address and let them know. I know a lot of them are absent landowners. There are a couple people who may live out there.
My two neighbors are full timers out there.
Oh, there you go. And then of course.
I know our dark neighbor right off of, next to us. Let me see the picture there. I know they're there all the time, but there's a metal building right across from us that we have never seen anybody there, all the time we've been up there.
A lot of the properties are like that, they just have a shed.
Yeah.
Or out west building. Just FYI, another property owner down at the end of the road is in the same boat, so he will be extending the road to your property.
Okay.
So, I don't mean extending it, but improving it a little bit.
Okay.
Yes, there's a public road easement that runs between the properties and that's Hoover, Hoover Drive, I guess.
Thank you, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I just want to make sure I'm doing it right.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the commission or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde for the record. You've heard earlier tonight some discussion about temporary use permits?
Yes.
But one thing as a commission we want to see is an earnest effort to move towards completing a residence. And so, could you, could you let the commission know tonight what you're committed to do during this next 12 months?
Um, within the next, I'm hoping if, bearing any unforeseen occurrences, the septic should be put in within the next month, possibly two. I will have blueprints and the permanent location of our house.
Within the next three.
Pretty good. I just, give me three to six months on that one, but I would like to, in all ideal actuality, I would like to actually start laying foundation before the end, the end of this year. Not this, not 2024, but by the end of 2025. I don't want to be living in a camper for two years.
I.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff Goings for the record, I was looking, and I'm, just one of those pictures, I thought something said, have you had, have you, is there a well yet?
No, this year, one of the, one of the, the conditions was to have a well installed, so I would, I do want to have a contract with a, with a well by the end of the year. I know I've heard some are out a couple of years, but I do want a contracted well. We currently have a 2,000 gallon water tank and I would ideally like to have two extra water tanks up there and we will be buying water from a, I, I don't know the name of the company, but we will be having water brought in.
It's FHA, it's approved potable water. They would deliver, it's, they would deliver it to us on a, on a monthly basis around a time schedule that we need.
And, and I will be, I, I got some information today, so I'll be touching base with Marshall's septic and see what we can do for maybe pumping up the trailers until we can get our septic in, but that septic is our number one priority to get installed.
Just continuing questioning, the power source?
Well, we're, we're going to initially do generators and solar. So we, we currently have two generators that are 2,500 watt?
No, 9,000.
9,000 watt generators that we will be using for power, but we do want to get a solar system out there.
We're currently in the process of trying to figure out, we're, I'm, I'm currently discussing with several different companies of getting it done, plus we've also looked at several other do-it-yourself setups, we like Amazon, stuff like that. We're just trying to get, I'm still trying to get information of what's going to be better for what we need for the, the house that we want to build and for other power uses.
So your objective is to be off the grid?
Yes.
Preferably, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hyde, Dean Patterson for the record, regarding the electric, there's just no electric service out there, so everybody is on generators and solar. There's a very large power line running through the area, but that's dedicated to Los Angeles.
Yeah, I, I actually talked to a friend of mine that works at the Energy, he said there's no way to tie it to anything out there. There is no power except for what, heads up, coming out of the state.
So you're off the grid whether you want to be or not?
Yes, sir.
Very much.
Is there any other discussion or questions? None heard, is there any public comment?
Yes.
Please come forward to the podium. Laura Lott, can you help get the microphone turned on? State your name and address for the record and direct your comments to the commission.
Kathleen Kelleher, I live at 15065 Hoover Drive. I'm the property to the right of them. And my concern is when we built in 2002, we weren't allowed to stay there until the house was built because there is no well, there's no septic, there's nothing on the property. And we're planning within the next couple of years because of my husband's age and medical condition that we are going to have to sell and I, you know, would like my property value to be substantial. We have, I have pictures of all the houses on my road and nobody has built, it's all still RVs and stuff.
Okay, any other comments?
No, I just, I can show you all the properties and nobody has built. There are maybe 10 homes out there with wells, septic and power.
Okay, thank you. None heard? When you, when the commission decides to make a motion for approval or denial, we'll need to make two motions. One motion will be for the temporary use permit attaching one RV and then the second motion will be for an additional RV on the property tied to that same temporary use permit, therefore if we need to remove one, we can.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record, final question then, what's the second RV for?
My mother, my mother.
Your mother?
My mother.
Can you elaborate a little bit on why she needs to live on the property while you're being there to build the home?
Uh, she is 75 years old and we are her caretakers to a certain extent. She lives on a fixed income, is single, and she resides with us full time.
She's been living with us since 2020.
Hang on just a second.
I'll just go ahead and elaborate here, the, the question I've been receiving, received from the commission, we have separate permits for home builder permits as well as separate permits for elder care.
Correct.
This is an interesting situation where there isn't already an existing home building permit, however, because this meeting has already been agendized and asked for, for two separate permits, the commission is authorized to issue both at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde, I just, I want to make a comment in, in regards to this young lady who made an earlier, stood up here and talked about all these homes that are, are mobile homes or RVs actually, and nothing's been done. I think what we're trying to do as a commission is to make sure that doesn't happen, we're trying to stop this, and so, we want to see, see real progress. And as, as Commissioner Going said earlier, very soon there'll be some very strict timelines and it, it will actually be at a different level where we want, it won't even come to us, it's going to be that way. So, I can tell you tonight, we want to be very certain that whoever comes before us is sincere and diligent, committed to look at this as a temporary use and to get in your home as soon as possible. So we appreciate your comments, ma'am. Thank you.
I will make one comment to the applicants because of the way it has been presented. Because this is a temporary use permit for home construction, once the home is constructed, if your intention is to continue to have an RV on the property for caretaker purposes, you will need to apply for an additional permit.
What the plan is, is that once the house is actually built, we'll all be in the house and we'll just use the RVs, one specifically for camping and the other one we're actually looking at possibly using for like, she shed for my mother-in-law.
I just wanted you to be aware because I don't want to have a situation where you believe that it's permitted, but after the home is built, it would need a separate permit.
Right.
Mr. Chair, Paul Pacoti for the record, are you ready for a motion? So based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find the criteria Churchill County Code 16.08.070 foxtrot have been met and therefore approve the temporary use permit for one RV temporary quarters during the home construction of Mindy Block, Chris Ebson, and Sharon Wolcott at 15181 Hoover Drive, APN 006-122-67. This approval submitted to conditions as listed in the staff report.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Pacoti, second by Commissioner Hyde. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There's a 10-day appeal period, at which time the planning department will contact you to complete the process. Thank you, good luck.
Did you want, Mr. Chair, did you want me to make the other motion?
Yeah, second motion, done, forgot.
Okay. Based on the information provided in the application, the staff report heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria code in Churchill County Code 16.08.070 foxtrot have been met and therefore approve the temporary use permit for temporary quarters for one RV during the home construction of Mindy Block, Chris Ebson, and Sharon Wolcott at 15181 Hoover Drive, APN 006-122-67. This approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Pacoti, second by Commissioner Hyde for the second RV, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There's a 10-day appeal period, at which time the planning department will contact you to complete the process. Good luck. Agenda nine D, temporary use permit application for temporary quarters for hardship caretaker filed by Larry and Tammy Lester. Property is located at 1672 Soda Lake Road, assessor's parcel number 00821176, consisting of 5.0 acres in the A5 zoning district. The applicant proposes to reauthorize an existing temporary use permit to allow a different person to reside in a temporary mobile home on the property. There you go, say your name and address for the record.
Tammy Lester, 1672 Soda Lake Road.
Planner Patterson?
Thank you, Dean Patterson for the record. The applicant has already, the applicant already has a temporary use permit for caretaker purposes. This request is to change the person needing care and living in the temporary unit. The Lesters are the caretakers living in the main home along Soda Lake Road. A sister, Roxanne Davis, is the person requiring care living in the temporary unit on Lenny Lane, and you can see the separation between the units on the screen. Documentation of 100% disability is provided. The sister can take care of herself but needs someone nearby to assist her. The access sewage and water and power services will not change due to the request. Staff recommends approval with conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Do you have any additional information or new information?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Does the commission have questions or discussion? None heard, is there any public comment concerning this matter? None heard, a call for a motion of approval or denial?
Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde for the record, based on the information provided in the application and the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.070 have been met and therefore approve the temporary use permit application for Larry and Tammy Lester to change the caretaker arrangement of their existing TUP at 1672 Soda Lake Road, APN number 008-211-76. This approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Hyde, second by Commissioner Going, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There's a 10-day appeal period, at which time the planning department will contact you to complete the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda nine E, temporary use permit for temporary quarters during home construction filed by Eric Madrigal. The property is located at the end of Helen. The property is located at the end of Helen's Way, Assessor's Parcel Number 006-031-10, consisting of 40 acres in the A10 zoning district. The applicant proposes to live in an RV on the property while constructing a primary residence. Please state your name and address for the record.
Eric Madrigal. I don't have an address yet.
Okay, thank you. Director or Planner Patterson?
Thank you, Dean Patterson, for the record. The applicant is requesting a temporary use permit for temporary quarters during home construction. The applicant is, was, this application was initiated in response to an enforcement action. The planned home will be of standard construction. The application indicates the home construction will take two to three years. The driveway and the foundation is expected to be done in the first year. The RV is proposed to be served as follows. RV power service for the RV is not indicated, but the applicant verbally indicates that the, that a generator is used. Water service for the RV is not indicated. The applicant verbally indicates that water is brought in, but not how. The RV sewage tank will be emptied by driving the RV to a dump station weekly. Comments were received from the building department. A placement permit for the RV is required and service connections must be inspected. Obtaining permits requires the property to have an address. Addresses can be obtained at the Public Works Planning and Building Department. The sewage disposal for the RV must either be connected to a septic system or handled through an approved waste plant. The building department staff indicates that a waste plant usually takes the form of a contract for scheduled pumping by a septic company. An informal method of disposal is usually not allowed. There were letters submitted in addition to the building department letter. Well, I guess it was just the fire marshal saying there was no issue, so never mind. Here's a copy for you if you'd like that, sir. Staff has no recommendation. If approved, there are recommended conditions of approval on the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any additional information or new information?
No, not at this time. Did you say something about I have to be hooked up to septic?
Then, the normal process, unless you have your septic system already in, is to have a contract with a septic company who comes out and pumps it, which is pretty much what everybody here before, before this point in the meeting has talked about.
So, I can't do that myself?
You'd need to talk to the building department.
Well, you can't answer that question right now?
It's, Randy Heinz for the record, it's more to ensure that the waste is actually getting taken care of in a timely manner and not necessarily overflowing or anything like that. It's more of a safety thing. That's why we, we tend to have either a contract with a septic company or a septic system put in, so it doesn't have any, so you don't have any problems with that.
So, are you going to pay for that?
No, sir.
As, as long as the RV's movable, you can drive it somewhere, dump it, get a receipt that you dumped it, drive it back, hook it back up, and turn in the receipt. Is that correct? Because that's what your plan was to begin with, correct?
Well, I, I go to the Baverick that's free dumping, so I just haul it to the.
So, you need some type of written proof that the sewage is getting dumped somewhere legally in order to comply with this order. If you cannot do that, then we have an issue. Okay? So, now, is that clear? Perfect. So, now, tell us what your plan is within the next 12 months. What do you plan to accomplish? And how long have you been living there already?
Oh, well, we just moved in in June, so.
Okay.
But as far as planning, I don't really have much planning yet because we just, I just bought the land. So, I don't really have much to do except for what I wrote on that piece of paper.
So, in the first 12 months, you're stating that you're going to install a driveway? You're going to?
Do a driveway and probably the foundation.
And a septic and drill a well?
The septic and well in the home is all in one. So, that won't be until I get the construction loan through my bank.
Okay. And what's the, what is, are you in the process with a bank loan at this time?
Well, I already have a loan for, paying for the property, which I can transfer into a construction loan, which that will be, I have a minimum of two years that I have to do that with my bank. That's the part of the agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a discussion or questions for the commission?
And I think we're going to revert back to much of the discussion that's happened here tonight, is that the criteria for these types of temporary use permits is going to get tighter and tighter and tighter. And, and as, as Chairman Hyde has said, or member Hyde has said, and actually Chairman Blakely here, what we're looking for is we're looking for you to tell us what you plan to have done within the next year, because this is a one-year reviewable temporary use permit. Where do you see yourself in one year on this, knowing that you're going to have a very tight timeline on this?
Basically clearing the driveway and clearing brush in order to put down foundation. Because all it is, is just brushing out there and hills, sand. So, in order to start building, I need to clear out an area. I don't have the equipment to do it yet.
So, I'll maybe just update folks who aren't aware. There's currently a plan and an ordinance going in front of the county commission to limit these temporary use permits to three years. And so, what the commission, I believe, is looking for is some sort of assurance that you'll actually be able to complete it in three years. And a lot of that is because we don't want to be in a situation where we grant the permit today when there's nothing there. And then two and a half years from now, you've invested and you're making good progress, but then the permit can't be renewed further. And so, it's a one-year permit today, but I think the expectation is somewhere within the next three years. And so, the assurance that the commission is looking for is that this is going to be potentially finally built within three years. And so, if the intention is perhaps to do a construction loan and that's an unknown time out, that's the concern. And so, if you can, I think, maybe provide some information to the commission as that's related to, that would be helpful.
The goal is to do it within three years. I want to do it in two, but realistically, money-wise, you know, that's, that's the issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Just clarification. I heard you earlier say that you're going to put the road in and the foundation. And you don't need to have the loan, the home loan for the foundation?
Actually, that's a good question. Yes, I would have to talk to my bank about that and see if I could get the loan for that, but.
Because I'd think the foundation and the septic and the well, I can see how those would get connected. Unless you have money right now where you could go and put in the foundation.
No, not at the moment. That's, I have to talk to my bank.
And really in priority, what we're looking for is a septic first, a well. Those things, power source, you know, before you, before you build a home.
Yeah, I don't even know exactly where we're going to put the house yet. And that's just a rough sketch on what we're doing. So, I don't even know where the septic or the well is going to be. So, it's all in planning at this point.
And you heard our legal counsel talk about the three-year, this was going to expire in three years. And so, it'll really behoove you to make a plan, not to wait, but to make sure, what can I actually get done in the next 12 months so that this doesn't catch up to you too late? Because then you have to move that RV off the property and finish building it, live somewhere else, and then come and finish building the home. So, we just, we just want to help you be successful by thinking about this and getting everything organized so that you can accomplish the three-year plan. Is that okay? Thanks.
Any other discussion, questions? Staff, anything they'd like to add? Is there any public comment? Please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Director comments to the commission?
James K. Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N, 8845 Helen's Way in Fallon.
Is the microphone on?
Okay, James K. Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N, 8845 Helen's Way here in Fallon. And my response is going to be in a positive nature. The individual, oh, sorry. The individual that has requested this is trying to build his house to help him with his endeavors. If he has a notion to ask his neighbors, there are quite a few of us that have equipment, backhoes, box scrapers, things like that, that I'm sure if he asks, would be willing to help him to help accommodate making some of these things happen, i.e. digging a septic system. You know, we don't have the capabilities for a well, but we, you know, all of us are very tightly knit out there, with the exception of a couple people. The majority of us are retired or former military. And we take our neighbors very family oriented. So, you know, if that helps with their approval process, I'm sure that either he or myself asks our other neighbors, and I'm sure that, you know, we can pull stuff together to help get his road done and get the brush moved.
Thank you. Maybe you should get in contact with your neighbor. Is there any other public comment? None heard? I ask the commission for a decision to approve or deny.
Mr. Chair, Paul Pecoti for the record. Based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.070 foxtrot have been met and therefore approve the temporary use permit for temporary quarters during the construction of Eric, Mr. Eric Madrigal on a property on Helen's Way, APN 006-031-10. This approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Pecoti, seconded by Commissioner Going. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Been approved. There'll be a 10-day appeal period, which time the planning department will contact you to complete the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Agenda 9F, Special Use Permit for Equestrian Boarding and Training Facility filed by Tori Robinson, Horsemanship LLC. The property is located at 3880 Edwards Lane, Assessor's Parcel Number 008-031-30, consisting of a total of 18.17 acres in the A10 zoning district. The application, applicant proposes to use this property for boarding courses and training services. Please state your name and address for the record. Use your business address.
Tori Ann Robinson and 3880 Edwards Lane.
Planner Patterson?
Thank you, Dean Patterson, for the record. So, this application proposes to establish a horse boarding and equestrian training business at this location. Business will operate out of an existing site currently set up for general agricultural operations using existing facilities at the south edge of the property. There are also multiple open-sided roof structures of substantial construction such as a hay, large hay cover and smaller corral covers. Note that there are issues with these structures being within the easements and setbacks, these, which are summarized in the staff report, but those are matters for the land owner, not the tenant. During a site visit and conversations, the applicant provided additional information about the business that are summarized in the staff report. The applicant is the main employee and normally spends most of the workday there taking care of the horses, horses, as well as feeding and checking on the horses on days off. Another person sometimes assists with, for limited hours. The business operates during daytime hours every day of the week. Most boarded horses are there to be trained by the applicant for various purposes, such as a young horse learning to take a rider, teaching horses to overcome specific problems or to train horses for specialized tasks. Sometimes a horse owner will come to the site for training or to see their horse. Veterinary visits or feed deliveries occur occasionally. The result is that customer visits are infrequent or rare, and it would be rare to have more than one person visiting at a time. The applicant is not requesting to do training classes with groups or, groups of people or to hold events because that would trigger the need for parking in more extensive visitor facilities. This application is very different from, very different than a, a normal business being almost more of a home business without the home. Almost all work is outdoors in an agricultural setting. Business facilities are very rudimentary. There are no restroom facilities at the site. There are no ADA facilities. The tack shed serves as the office. Customer visits are rare, so there's no defined parking area other than general driveways and open areas. These are all described in depth in the staff report, as are the review criteria for the special use permit. Staff is recommending a limited approval. If approved, we would recommend that this business be treated more similarly to a home business with conditions of approval to limit the scope of the business to be more agricultural than commercial so that such facilities are not needed. Specifically, employees other than the owner should not be allowed and visits by groups of people should not be allowed. This would mean the business owner and visitors need to address restroom needs before and after visiting the site and providing drinking water on their own. There are recommended conditions of approval in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything they wish to add or new information?
No.
Thank you. Does the commission have any discussion or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Markhyde for the record. So, one concern would be how many people are actually there at a time that would necessitate a public restroom. Kind of give us an idea of the day-to-day activities, what that looks like in terms of numbers of people who actually come and, and address the question, will there be events where more, more than two people would possibly be there?
So, usually it's just me there. I have a couple of gals who will clean stalls every now and then. So, on Mondays and Tuesdays, I've got a lady there for an hour. And then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, I've got another gal for an hour in the mornings to do stalls. Other than that, I'll have, sometimes like I'll do a lesson, about one, one to two lessons per day for kids or beginners. So, they'll, either their parent will come and bring them. And it's usually, I can only teach one student at a time, so I only have one good lesson horse. So, group lessons aren't really an option for me unless I buy more horses, and I'm just not interested in buying more horses right now. I don't do clinics or events just because I don't think I have the parking to suit it. That was something I had done in the past before, but I could only fit, I don't know, probably five or six trailers in that area, so it's not really worth it to put on a group or event of that sort.
So, those people who are there cleaning stalls, for example, they're there for an hour plus.
Yeah.
Are there any restroom facilities for them?
No, no restrooms. We do have, I have cases of water for, for drinking water, but no restrooms on site.
So, they just, they just hold it, right?
Huh? Say that again?
I'm just wondering what they do if they, if they need it, need restroom facilities.
What we've done in the past, I mean, no one's ever. What we've done in the past, I mean, no one's ever, I guess, needed one so far, but what, what we've done is, I live a mile away, so I'll drive them to my house if they need to.
That's what you do, is you take them to your home?
I can if I have to, yeah. I haven't had to do that, but it's an option.
And have you thought about having like a Sandy Hut, some type of facility there for that purpose?
I've not, but that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, for the record. So I want to get clear on this. I think I understand the layout of this place. The Norcat home is what we see under roof to the, okay, yeah, so that's correct. So really, okay, the Norcats are back. Who is, who owns the property directly to the east there underneath that, yeah, right there? Do you know, do you know those owners?
No. I don't know either. The people who just, properties to the west, just moved in like three days ago, so I haven't met them yet.
All right, so it's been a while since I've been out there.
Yeah.
What, the other little concern I have, and we had this concern on the last one of these, and I think it needs to be addressed here, so is your intent to use that arena for like your lessons?
Yes.
Turning out or whatever? Is the dust that could be created off of that arena to the neighbor, to the east there? Do you have any plans on like how to wet that arena to kind of keep it down, keep the dust down?
So we thought about putting like a sprinkler system up. The only problem is the only spigots on the property are right by the round pen. There's one on the east side, and then there's one kind of over by that empty triangle parking lot area. So we could wet like half of it with the hoses that I have, but the other half would be the tricky part.
Excuse me, in that drain that runs east-west right there on the north end of it, is that, there's a drain there, I think they're calling it G-drain or something like that? Is that a drain or is that a canal right there that the road back to the Norcat house goes over?
That's an irrigation ditch.
It's an irrigation, it's not a drain?
Yeah, so my landlord will irrigate those fields off of that.
Okay, I got you. I was just trying to look for a spot where you could potentially pick up some.
Pick up some water.
Some water to wet, yeah. Is that, that could become a concern as you use that arena more. You're gonna have these neighbors that, you know, are gonna be.
Right.
I think to, to help you with your issue, it's in the conditions in number five, it's that, that this does not create a nuisance.
Yeah.
So dust to the neighbors would create a nuisance, therefore should be in violation of the TUP at that time, and then, so that's something to consider and work on and, and not be a nuisance to the neighbors. Is there any other discussion? Jeff, do you have anything? Is there any public comment? None heard? I ask for a motion of approval or denial.
Just a statement. We're really supportive of this. We want to encourage that type of business in Fallon. I think that where you do have some employees who are cleaning stalls and are there for at least an hour, it might be a humane thing to do to have, one of the conditions, and I don't, I don't see, am I missing that? I don't see that here. But could we not add that condition, that there should be some Sandy Hut?
You can add it. I would suggest that for the applicant's awareness, obviously sanitation can, controls are actually through a completely sometimes different apartment, and you may be getting a letter from somebody else who says you're in violation. There's also rules for employees and controls that could be a concern for you. Obviously, I can advise you about what you're gonna be required to do. This commission is absolutely within its ability to require that you have some type of facility. I just want you to be aware that even if this permit is granted, and even if there isn't that condition in here, you may be required to by another agency.
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, the staff report heard tonight, I move to find the criteria found in CCC 160808OH have been met and therefore approve the special use permit for Tori Robinson Horsemanship at 3880 Edwards Lane, APN number This approval is subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report, with an additional condition of a portable toilet be added to one of the conditions. Is that, is that correct? Is that what it'd be called, a portable toilet would be? The Sandy Hut is the company, so I want to make sure. Got it, right, okay.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Goings, seconded by Commissioner Hyde. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There's a 10-day appeal period, at which time the planning department will contact you to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck. Agenda, item 10, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, Paul Pecoti, for the record. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Pecoti, seconded by Commissioner Hyde. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Agenda item number 11, Public Comment. Is there any public comment? I have a couple things. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Pecoti, Paul Pecoti, for his years of service to the Land Commission. You've been dedicated and you've done a great job for us, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Proud to sit up here and serve the community.
And we look forward to you getting on something else in the future. And then we also would like to recognize Commissioner Deal, Deanna Deal. She was a long-term serving commissioner. She is away on health concerns at this time, but anyway, we'd like to make sure that she knows she was greatly appreciated, and her years of service were definitely great to this community. Next item of business, we have new commissioners coming on next month. One of our commissioners has went through his first meeting tonight, Mr. Nsodigie. Thank you for coming. We look forward to working with you in the future. And the other commissioner is Ms. Edgman, and she'll be here next month. And that's all I have. Does anyone else have any public comment? None heard? The meeting is adjourned, 7:37 PM. Thank you.